Welcome back to Pioneers and Builders in Jacksonville, Florida, or as we affectionately, affectionately call it PB and Jax. Doing something a little different. Normally, we do small businesses and entrepreneurs. Obviously, we've had some city leaders on and today we have a city council hopeful Raj Gupta on the show. I love that we're sitting down in person and doing this, but I had a chance to get to know you past few weeks. It's been a blast. I'm glad we're doing this.
Absolutely.
Welcome to PB and Jax.
First off, thank you so much for having me. I'm very, very excited to be here today and honored and grateful to have the opportunity to serve Jacksonville. I love Jacksonville. Jacksonville is home for me. Such a beautiful and phenomenal place to be.
It really is. And thank you for, for sharing that. I've been here 18 years. I love it. That's why, I mean, I have a podcast with Jackson, the name. It's like all I, it's like all I really think about and care about. And you specifically, you've been here and you've started businesses and you have your family here. But one of the things about you and your life is your wife's here because she's active duty.
That is correct.
We have a huge military presence here.
She is Navy, active duty. Go Navy.
Go Navy.
Absolutely. She is the backbone of who I am to this day right now. We haven't known each other for eons of years, like we're not high school sweethearts, but we operate as if we are. I feel like I've known her for my whole entire life.
Yeah.
So she's an amazing mother. She's an amazing spouse. I'm so grateful to, to have met her. So she is, is everything to me.
Well, shout out to her. I'm, I'm excited for her to see this.
Love you, Marissa.
You were, before we jumped on, you were talking about your schedule and how you've been all over the state and you're trying to still run a business and you're trying to be a father and you're trying to run for council. None of that is even remotely or humanly possible without having somebody at home taking care of the responsibilities. So.
And she is active duty. So she's on base every day, Monday through Friday in her command. So she is doing that as well, too. So like she's very, very busy. She's up at five o'clock in the morning every, every day. So I commend her as well, too. So it's a partnership. We work, we work well together. We communicate extremely well and we, we, we do life together. She is definitely a great partner.
That's wonderful, man. I love that your kids are like every day seeing two people work their ass off.
Yeah.
Like just grinding it, like trying to achieve certain things. I'm a Navy vet. So I know for her, it's like, okay, I'm doing something bigger than me. And then for you, you're running and serving to do something bigger than you.
Absolutely.
That takes a lot of work. So your kids are gonna get to see like, you're the example. And that's, that's an excellent example to, to have for both of you.
Absolutely. And that's why I do what I do, to, to leave a legacy behind that doesn't matter where you start. It's how you continue to keep pursuing what it is that you are meant to do in life. And we all have a different purpose, right? And, and I believe in that higher purpose of one, being able to help others, two, making sure that you stay consistent, and three, making sure that you have goals that you're looking to accomplish. Because without goals, without consistency, without that vision, without that purpose, you're not going to be able to hit the pinnacles in life to where you feel fulfilled when it's all over. We all have different timelines on when it's over for us, right? When, when, when dirt hits us. But at the same time, we have to focus on what can we accomplish today to hit those larger goals that we have and chip at it every day, small. So that, that's what it's really about.
Hundred percent. And you are, you're a faith-based man.
I am.
So like, how much of, of your faith is allowing you or like leading you into this mindset of like, hey, we just need to chip away at it every day. We need to be present. We need to make sure that we're, uh, we don't have to achieve our goals every day, but at least we need to move ourselves closer to it. I mean, how, how much is, is your faith put you in that position?
A hundred percent of it. A hundred percent. Without God, I'm nothing.
That's wonderful. I don't shy away from faith-based conversations on this show. I'm a Jesus guy.
Absolutely.
I, I have never shied away from it and I won't. So the fact that you have that is such a big part of your life is, is fantastic.
Absolutely. It, it is everything to me. There was a time in my life where I was, I felt lost. I felt, and this is when I was making six figures in, in, in corporate America. Uh, this was a time where I just purchased a, a brand new home and things went south, um, quick. And when I say things went south, my life just took a turn to where I was, I was previously married and there, there, we were all of a sudden going through a divorce after we just purchased a home. Um, and it, it crushed me from a standpoint of an emotional standpoint that I'd never thought that I could ever be crushed. Um, and I was in a rough place and I, I had a relationship with God. I, I always believed in God. Um, so, and I was raised in the church. So for me to get to a point to where things are going so well and then now divorce is on the table, then I lost that job, um, because I decided to walk away from it for, for a few different reasons. And now I'm, okay, finances are a little shaky. Now I have this new house. How do I continue to survive? Emotionally, I'm not okay. And to continue to keep going, I got to a tough spot during that time in my life. And I really leaned into, all right, God, what is it that you need me to do? There are shifts, changes. You have my attention. You're, you're, you're here. What do I need to do? Because I felt like I was at the end of my life because things were going so well and now things are not going well. So to, to have that pendulum swing so quickly was a very difficult time for me. And that's when things started to, to really open up to where I started to find a therapeutic way to handle challenges in life. And that became writing. And then that became a new business. That's my book right there. That's the first book that I wrote there when I was going through that, that difficult time. Um, and now I'm three books in now as a published author. The business that I started during that time ended up getting acquired for, for a very lucrative amount of money. Um, I end up getting another position after I end up getting acquired as a VP for a hundred million dollar company. Um, and being able to build that out during that, that build out that I had was prepared for COVID. So God had a plan that I had absolutely no foresight on seeing, but I had to go through that difficult time to be a testimony to other people that doesn't matter what you go through in life, how many challenges you have, what difficulties you have. It doesn't matter if even if you have to start from scratch again. You will get to the place that you need to go as long as you stay consistent, as long as you stay prayerful, as long as you believe that you're going to get out of that situation, you will get out of that situation. And that's what I want to be able to bring to every person here in Jacksonville. That if you're in a difficult time, there's so many people right now that are struggling financially, figuring out how to provide for their families. I don't have a hundred percent of the answers for every single one of those individuals, but the one answer that I can give is belief. You have to believe in you. And when you believe in you, things and opportunities and God, God shows up. And God is getting ready to show up here in Jacksonville. A lot of people are struggling. A lot of people are, are looking for new opportunities. They're looking for an increase. We need to bring more jobs and opportunities here to Jacksonville to help support the community. So that, that is the focal point of, of some of the pillars that we're going to talk about a little bit of my campaign. But, um, but yeah, I'll, I'll stop chatting here.
No, of course. I, I, we're definitely going to get into your platform and why you're running and the solutions that you want to bring to the table. And we're going to talk about Jacksonville in, in full. Uh, for everybody who wants to watch this to say, okay, like, cause you're running for an at-large, people get an opportunity to like really vote for you.
Yes.
Uh, it's not district based. So I want people to know the man that they're voting for.
Yes.
Start with you, who you are. I mean, we've, we know a couple of things. We know you're a father. We know you're a husband. We know you're an entrepreneur. We know you're an author. Uh, but you, as a human being, day to day, who is Raj Gupta? And, um, you know, what would you like people to know about you?
Yeah. Um, if I talked about me, uh, we'd be talking for a long time. Um, so I'll summarize it. I am passionate about writing, music, art. Personally, I love music as a whole. My favorite band, um, and it's, it's not a Christian band. It's Evanescence. It's, it's, you know, I love alternative music, right? And then I love hip hop and then I love R and B and I love jazz and I love classic, classic rock. Uh, I, you know, I'm a big Journey fan. Um, I went to go see Journey, um, when they had the, I forget his name. He's a Filipino singer that, uh, for the, for the main artists, it might, I can't remember.
They were like the opening act or something?
No, no, no. He was filling in for, for the rest of the, the lead singer of Journey. But I got to go see them in, in California a few years back. So they were performing. I love music. I am very passionate about music. Um, so who am I as an individual? I'm a person that works extremely hard. Uh, sometimes too hard, my wife will say. Um, I answer phone calls at night and mentor young men that are struggling sometimes emotionally and going through some challenging times. Um, I, I love my family. Uh, I wish that I could spend a lot more time with my, my family as a whole, not just my children, but my external family as well, too. Um, I will do anything for my family. Um, what else? I love to be outdoors, hike. I love to go on a bike ride. If you catch me in the gym, I'm in the gym four or five times a week. Um, I love being active. I love doing outdoor things. I love to travel. I love to try new restaurants. So I'm, I'm that guy that loves to do those things. And, um, I don't like to just sit at home all the time, but I can be a homebody. I love to read books. Um, I love to learn something new every single day. I try to instill that in my children. Um, so that's who I am on a personal level.
Okay. I think that's great. It segues perfectly to this. What is calling you to run? Like, why were you like, that's my next step?
Great question. So it's a two-pronged answer. Um, first and foremost, I don't move or maneuver or do anything in life without God telling me this is what I need to do. Um, and the way that my relationship works with God is it's in a, I, I get the answer in threes, right? Um, the first thing is I had a dream. I'm going to be a politician. I see me speaking. And for me, that dream was, was very scary. Um, and I will say that it's very scary because I'm not fearful of things that God wants me to do, but it's fearful in my own mind because I hate pers, I, I hate public speaking. I hate it. Um, I'm not good at it. I'll be the first to tell you. I'm like, most people are just like Raj was wrong. You, you love to talk, love to talk on the phone. Love to have these types of one-on-one conversation. When it comes to public speaking, it's not my forte. So that's the first thing. The second time was I had a, like, it was like a daydream that I had. I was awake and I was, I was driving to a client and I saw myself on a large stage in front of a mass amount of people just speaking about political issues. And I'm just like, what is this? Right? I'm a business owner. I'm, I'm not a politician. So that was the third. Then I met Ron and I'm tinkering around with it. I'm thinking about it. And I mean, Ron Armstrong, he's running for mayor. Um, and we sat down and he was just like, I want to go, I want to take you to coffee and let's just have a conversation. I'm just like, okay, cool. Yeah. You're running for mayor. I met you at a political event. Um, and I always support the Republican Party politically, um, locally here in Jacksonville. I've, I've gone to different meetings and things of that nature. Um, but I never saw myself as running specifically. Um, and he was just like, when are you going to start running? I was just like, oh, that's a great question. Um, and I told him the same thing. He was like, dude, pray about it, but you need to run. Um, so I prayed about it and I got confirmation that it's time. And my wife is like, I support you a hundred percent. And that was it. That's all I needed. Um, so I gave my yes to, to, to serve because it's a sacrifice.
Yep.
I have a business. I have family. I love to travel. All of those things do not equate to serving the people. But one thing you will know about me, if I commit to something, I'm going to do it. Um, and one of the biggest things that you can get from me a hundred percent, if I am elected, I'm going to answer the phone and we're going to hear what the people need. And then we're going to take action on it. A lot of times I can't even get a council member on the phone, right? But then when we go to city council meetings, which I've been going to very recently, um, every single one, very recently, I see a lot of them on the phone, not looking at the people when they're coming up to talk. So I think that's a challenge. I think we need to work on that as a whole. I'm not saying that it's not important to handle other items or you may have to take a phone call or text message or anything like that. If it's an emergency, I get that. Um, but you should always make sure you're giving the people time.
I think that's wonderful. I really do. Um, and that message rings clear. I was watching the city council meeting from, I think the third week of April, maybe it was the second week of April. And yeah, if they weren't, if it wasn't their turn to talk, like it was head down. I, I, it was a little surprising at the lack of engagement that was taking place. So the fact that you have recognized that, I've, I've spoken to that amongst my circle. Be like, man, I was a little surprised by this, but to hear that, you know, you've recognized it yourself and you're talking about it is, is a good thing.
Yeah. Um, there's one council member that I, well, actually two, that I see that is always engaged. Um, I don't know if I should name names, but.
I mean, you're, you're speaking highly of them.
Yeah. Um, Raul is always focused. He's always looking. He's always engaged and it doesn't matter who's speaking and it doesn't matter even if they're talking negative, negatively about him. Um, I've seen him jump down out of the, the area and come down and speak to people individually. I see him very engaging and also Terrence Freeman. I do actually know Terrence personally. Um, but he's engaged. He's, he's helping people out. He's really behind the scenes fighting for people. There, there was some challenges that went on very recently at city council to where there was an arrest of, of a couple of different folks that brought a knife in. And it's a very touchy subject when there's racial slurs and he stood up and the Republican candidates or excuse me, the Republican, um, council members on, voted on something that was very interesting. Um, the bill was to allow someone who made a racial slur as a trustee to be voted in as a trustee, um, from the Donna Deegan administration that she was looking to appoint to a specific board, uh, the librarian board.
Yep.
What was interesting is that it wasn't unanimous. There was four or five people that voted to allow this person that made a racial slur, um, which was very surprising. And it, it brought emotion to certain people to feel an uproar unfairness. Um, and I'll say this, and, and I probably should have said this at city council meeting. Um, but again, it's that public speaking. I'm, I'm getting, I'm, I'll, I'll get there. But, um, I've been called a token before. I've been called that. It's very offensive. And that terminology is used that your work or effort that you're putting towards, um, whatever it is that you're doing or whatever reason why you're called that, that your work or effort is not valued, that you are only in position of management power or have a voice because of the color of your skin. Um, and a lot of people don't realize that that could be very defaming of the body of work that that individual is, is doing. So, um, it is very offensive and it shouldn't be taken lightly. And I'm so glad that, um, she was not able to be appointed. I won't use names. Um, but that person that was, that was voted against, um, because the majority and the majority of the people that voted were Republican council members. And the people that voted against it was, um, Democratic council members. So, which was interesting, but, um, because the Democratic Party is normally in support of fairness, especially when it comes to, to African-American community. So I was very taken back on why, um, the Democratic Party was not more supportive of, of a unanimous decision of not allowing this individual to be, um.
Confirmed?
Confirmed. Yeah.
I think, well, probably toeing the line, right? The party line, you know, Donna Democratic.
She's appointing.
Nominating, exactly. And then they're trying to, you know, the Democrats are outnumbered in city councils. So they're probably trying to toe the line and hoping that there's a couple of Republicans that'll kind of cross, cross over and be supportive. But yeah, I followed that story very closely and I'm very familiar with everything you just mentioned. And yeah, I mean, I'm glad she wasn't confirmed either. Um, it has nothing to do with politics or parties or anything, but, um, you just, you can't appoint somebody to serve at that level, um, when they have a certain frame of mind.
I agree.
About particular issues. Yeah.
I agree. One hundred percent. It's, it's, it's a challenge here. Um, we are in the South. Um, and when I say that, we are in an area to where, um, racism does exist. It does. And to be open and frank about a person, um, of color and to call them a token is a racial slur. Um, period. And it shouldn't be acceptable in any platform and you should not be in leadership if you have that, that mindset because you're serving everyone, not just one group of people. Um, so it was very surprising. I, I am glad of the result. And this is a higher level of accountability. So I'm very proud of Jacksonville for, for keeping that level of accountability. But the uproar between people coming into city council with weapons because of it and wanting to cause challenges or, or problems, I think that just shows that we still need to continue to keep growing as a city and we still have work to do.
Yep. Um, speaking of that work, you, you're running at, for an at-large seat, at-large for, I believe.
Two.
Two.
Group two.
Group two. For those who are watching and maybe they're newer to Jacksonville or newer to Jacksonville politics or city politics or local politics, what's the difference besides the geographic part? So there's a council, each council person represents a district.
Yes.
There's a certain amount of districts and then there's a certain amount of at-large, um, seats.
Yes.
So one, one, what kept you from running for the district you were in? And two, you know, how do you pick between group one, group two, group three, group four? Like, walk us through how this came to be.
Yep, absolutely. So the groups are broken down into different sections of Jacksonville. I don't have the map in front of me, but I'd be able to show you, um, the reason why I decided to run at an at-large group, um, because the, the at-large groups are handling different challenges outside of call, the, the districts are specific districts. So it's different zip codes. So, um, Jimmy Peluso's, uh, is downtown Arlington area. Um, so, and I'm using him as an example. Um, downtown currently right now, if you ran over a pothole and your tire got flat and you want to report that pothole, you would call Jimmy Peluso's office and say, hey, this is the address of where the pothole is. You wouldn't call an at-large group. At-large group is going to be handling a little bit more of different larger challenges, um, outside of looking for revenue sources. Now, the council as a whole votes on their vote counts for everything. They only get one vote. So a at-large group member is not having a higher level vote of a district, um, council member. However, the at-large group handles a different body of, of work. Um, and that different body of work is, is looking at things at a larger scale from what I used to, what I'm currently still doing with my business, um, and what I used to do before as, as a VP looking at, okay, we're dealing with this contractor. This is the budget here. This is what we're going to allocate money for here, um, and being a part of different groups there. So that, that's the difference. Um, not a major difference, just minor.
Yeah. Okay. And you're running as a Republican. We've, we've made that a point. Notoriously, uh, people of color lean left.
That's, that's the stigma.
Yeah.
And I, I wouldn't say stigma. That's not a good word. I would say that's, that is the, the norm for right now. Um, but if we look back in history, the Republican Party really started supporting black people when they were emancipated from slavery. Um, and the Republican Party was actually created for black people to, to vote. And I don't know that a lot of black people know that. Um, we live in a time now to where everything is very sensitive and there are different layers of sensitivity, but the reason why I am a black Republican is because my values align with the Republican Party, period.
And what are, let's talk about those. What are your values?
Family. Okay. Family is key. Family is essential to everything, right? And we all have different families. Mine is a blended family. So there's, I have to share time with my children with a previous spouse, right? Um, my wife has to share time with her previous spouse. Didn't work, but we try to make it work and blend it in any way that we possibly can and incorporate all of our cultures, all of our dynamics, all of our values together. So that's in a challenge in itself. And when you can have a community in Jacksonville to support that, that's everything that you need. That is the community. The community is the families because without families, you have no community, right? And without reproduction, right, of those families, then the community doesn't survive over a long period of time, right? Um, so people need to start coming and flocking to Jacksonville. A lot of people are leaving Jacksonville quicker than wanting to stay here in Jacksonville. And some of those challenges are on the city level of what we can do to help support those families a lot more. Make people want to stay here in Jacksonville. Um, so that's why I resonate with the, that's number one, family values. Um, fiscal responsibility is huge, right? Um, I don't believe that not being fiscally responsible within yourself and not being fiscally responsible, um, as a community and city budgets, these are all things that the Republican Party aligns with heavily. And I do too, right? Um, and I'm going to say this, and this is going to be a very tou, touchy subject. Um, the way God made you, and I'm going to say this, the way that God made you, even though you may be able to have a surgery and change it, even though you may be able to do something to enhance yourself, but the way that God made you, the way that you were born here, I truly believe that that's the way that you were designed to be. Whatever your sexual orientation is, that's your business. I have nothing against you if you have those, those things. But in my household, the way that I really believed to raise my children and my family, um, that's the way that God designed you to stay that way. Because there's nothing wrong with you. You're beautiful the way that you are. There's nothing that needs to be changed. And if there's things that happen to you in life, so be it. Let's figure out a way to work through it, right? Um, so those are the three reasons why I truly align with the Republican Party.
Okay. Great answers. And I appreciate that. You mentioned in those answers that people are leaving Jacksonville. Why do you think that is?
Infrastructure, um, opportunities. Younger people are, are looking for the Microsofts of the world, the, the Googles of the world, right? To young corporate people who are going to college here or have gone to college, they left to go to college, then they want to come back to Jacksonville. But where are those opportunities that they have? A lot of the world has shifted and changed to remote work, um, to where I, you know, fortunately, if I'm not traveling to consult for, for my company, um, I'm working remotely, right? A lot of people don't have those opportunities. So I think bringing a little bit more opportunities commercial-wise to Jacksonville should be the priority for the council members, uh, and starting in 2027. I think that should be a mandate, bringing way more opportunities. Now, I know that the Donna Deegan administration is working on trying to build up Jacksonville. But what about the commercial buildings that are currently vacant right now? How many, how many do we have right now? How many businesses have been looking to apply for business permits? Um, businesses that are looking to apply for business licenses and it's taking years to get them to them, right? But we're building things, but we're not filling up what we currently have. That's poor infrastructure. So shame on you, Donna.
Well, uh, yes, there are a lot of cranes in the air. We are building a lot of things. And every time I turn around, there seems to be an exciting new project. Um.
What about what, what we currently have? How many, how many office buildings and openings that we currently have? I, I think the Bank for America, half of the building, when I went there was vacant.
Yeah. I happen to know, um, cause I've tried to work very closely with JSAB.
Yep.
And we are, they're aware, and obviously you and I are aware that, uh, there were a ton of open buildings and empty ones. And what I have learned is the people that own those buildings, they just keep them vacant because it's just a massive tax write-off to have the building. And so whether it's this administration, council, the next administration, somebody's going to have to incentivize these private owners to say, listen, like, we will give you X, Y, and Z, but we need access to this building, like whatever the case may be. So maybe assuming you're elected, maybe that can be step number one is finding a way. maybe assuming you're elected, maybe that can be step number one is finding a way while being fiscally responsible to incentivize these individuals to allow our small businesses to have a place where they can actually serve their constituents.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Let's talk about the platform itself. You know, you're running. You're running for somebody who's been in that seat for a long time.
Yep.
As a big name.
Ron Salem, great guy.
And so he's being termed out and you're you're running for his seat. I guess I have two questions out of the gate on this. Number one is you know, his voice has carried some weight for some time. And the group two seat will be vacant and it'll be filled by a newcomer one way or another. So question one is, you know, how do you make sure that, you know, your voice as somebody who's sitting in that chair can still resonate and carry the same level of weight? And two, what ideals do you have that are the same and or different than what Ron has? What are you excited to bring to the table when you first have your first meeting?
Ron has left a phenomenal, he's he's done an outstanding job. I I think what he's doing with Doge right now, finding five point five million dollars in additional funds and heading that up. I think he's done an outstanding job and that falls in line with what I want to bring to the table is fiscal responsibility. I think that is extremely important when you have a city like Jacksonville that has the level of debt that we currently have right now. And the answer is not increasing taxes or trash bills, which we had to do again, right? So these are things that I want to make sure that we are looking at very closely and Ron has done a phenomenal job. I think his leadership and guidance, I would, if I was elected, I would continue to keep bugging him regardless of whatever else he's going to do. I'm going to text him on his cell phone like, hey, Ron, what do you think about this, right? I think good mentorship with Ron and myself, we would work very good closely together. As well as Terrence Freeman and some of the other members that are probably going to go on, do other government government work. I I think they have aspirations of doing that. I'm not exactly sure what they're going to be currently doing, but I will bug them. Because if I don't know the answer to something or I I'm in need of counsel. I'm going to ask people who have done an outstanding job in those positions. So I think what I pride myself on is being able to get close to them and and continue to keep a good listening ear. For that, moving forward. So I I think what I'm going, you know, what I'm going to bring to my platform as far as what I'm bringing to the table as far as council. Safety is is huge right now, okay? We should not have downtown the way that it currently is right now to where people do not feel safe. If we were to, if we were to do a poll right now and majority of people, do you feel safe downtown? I guarantee you it'll be a ninety-eight percent. Guaranteed. So we want to make sure that people are feeling safe when going downtown, right? We want to go see the football, the Jaguars play, right? We want to go see them, right? Do you feel safe? Are you going to feel harassed by homeless people? Like, these are all things that we have to look into. And it's it's the city's responsibility. It's, I know Sheriff TK Waters, I know him, he's actually one of my neighbors. And he's doing outstanding job getting the the crime now, but it also it's also the programs that we put in place for homeless people to help get them the help that they need, mental health awareness. We need to do a little bit more with that, right? Those are the things that I want to make sure that we're bringing to the table. Veterans that are, we have three bases very close by, right? And with those bases, and it hits home, obviously, my wife, when she decides to to part ways with the military. What are those next steps for her, right? Are we supporting the people that are close that have sacrificed so much for us? And I think we need to do a better job. Matter of fact, I know we need to do a better job. Even yourself as a veteran, you get one class for a week of transition and then that's it. Here you go. That's it.
Yep.
And it's up to you to try to figure out how to acclimate yourself back into society. There's so many people, the suicide rates are insane right now. If I was to give you the rates and those numbers right now. We had two people who committed suicide in Jacksonville on the same day, three days ago. Okay, and some of them, a lot of, the military doesn't want to talk about this, but a lot of them are veterans. Because they feel lost, they feel alone.
Yeah, lack of purpose. That's that's the number one.
The city needs to do something to help wrap our arms around these people. They have sacrificed so much for us. It's hard for me not to cry about this right now because I know what those sacrifices are. So much. So thank you to all of our veterans out there. We need to support them more. We need to do a better job. We have three bases here in Jacksonville. Well, actually, technically two.
In Jacksonville, yeah.
In Jacksonville.
Four, four in the region, Camp Landings.
Yes.
And Kings Bay.
Kings Bay, yes.
Yeah. I, if if you, if you are elected. I'm trying to do the best work I can, working with veteran organizations. One of the things, and I'm going to ask you this in a little bit. I I ask everybody that's been on the show, like, what is Jacksonville doing well? And what can Jacksonville do better? Recently, I had a guest on and they said Jacksonville were so siloed that people are all launching their own nonprofits or launching their own businesses. And you could have the same nonprofit in five different parts of town. And they're not working together because it's so disjointed.
Yeah.
So now we're stretching funds. We're, you know, we're funding this one and this one and this one and this one. And they can't make meaningful impact because the funding itself is not what's necessary to make meaningful impact and change. So what I'm trying to do is put these nonprofits together. And a really good example, this wasn't a veterans initiative, but Ron, who is a PB and Jack's alumni, hello, Ron. You know, he said he wanted to, one of the things he was running on is he wants to keep kids out of foster care.
Yeah.
So I said, well, instead of, you know, building out that infrastructure yourself and like creating that platform. I just interviewed a nonprofit that that's what they do and they're doing amazing at it. Why don't I just put you in touch and then you guys can work together and just build out, you know, use their infrastructure to build out your plan. So I introduced them and that's exactly what happened.
Wow.
So we kept Ron from like continuing the issue of like, let's just start another thing, right? Now we're putting more awareness on the ones that are doing great work. They've already built the infrastructure. They're thirty years old, forty years old. So they already know what they're doing. They know who to ask for funding. They have the relationships. And I, we have to do that with the veteran organizations.
Absolutely.
Every time I go to a veteran stand down event that the city puts on, or I go to the Jacksonville Veteran Military Coalition every quarter. And, you know, there's a hundred people in that room and everybody stands up and they say, hey, like, this is what I do. These are the services we provide. This is who we are. And they're all grouped together. Some of them, like, there's a ton of them that provide mental health services. There's a ton of them that do like gun safety. There's a ton of them that do like, oh, we'll help you get your benefits. There's some that'll help you get a job or do your resume or re-civilianize you. So.
We need to be putting resources into programs like that, the Wounded Warrior Program. We, I'm a huge advocate for that. We need to continue to keep supporting programs like that. That needs to be a heavy priority in our community. Because that is the lifeblood of keeping us safe. We have two bases here to where veterans, they get out of the military and they don't want to stay in Jacksonville. They want to go back somewhere else or travel somewhere else. And we need to support them. And if we support them, this will become home because it has been home for them, right? So it it's extremely important. We have to wrap our arms around them in many different ways.
Yeah, I I'm with you. So Operation New Uniform is a must.
Yes.
Wounded Warrior Project, Canines for Warriors, the Fire Watch, and then the Stephen A Cohen Clinic.
Yes.
Those have, those are the core five, like, they have to be so well represented because the work they're doing, they the Canine, Canines for Warriors alone, you know, I got to interview Daniel Bean, who's the CEO, and he said, we are here to eradicate veteran suicide.
Yeah.
Nick Howland's the CEO of Fire Watch. We are here to not just drop the veteran suicide rate, we're here to eradicate it.
Yes.
So.
Nick is doing a great job.
He really is.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable. So.
And that's why he's the vice president of the council now. Congrats, Nick.
Congrats, Nick. Also PB and Jack's alum.
Yep.
Yeah. We've had some good ones, man. So I I'm curious what's next for in the process. So we're in twenty twenty-five. The election, I think, is in twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
So what's the roadmap here to there? Like, what, are you knocking on doors, shaking hands? Is there, what goes into that?
Everything. So you will see a heavy online presence. I will also have a door knocking team as well, too. I will be at as many meetings as possible. Pending that my wife doesn't need me home for dinner sometimes.
Of course.
I feel like there's a meeting every day of the week. And it's it's a, it's a commitment. It's a sacrifice. But again, I think just continuing the course of figuring out how day by day, we can get small wins to make Jacksonville better is going to be the key. And it starts now. So I'm encouraging some of the people that are out supporting me currently right now. Get my phone number. If you run into some challenges, if you can't get a hold of your council member, I'll go run them down and I'll go find them for you. I'll help you. Figure this out because the work starts now. And I've had people reach out to me and say, hey, Raj, I can't get a hold of Jimmy Peluso. I'm just using him as an example. I can't get a hold of him. So you know what I'll do? I know where he lives. I'll go knock on his door. Say, hey, Jimmy, this is what, we need to get this done. Let's set up a meeting or I need to get a hold of of Nick. I got Nick's personal cell phone number. I can give him a call. Joe Carlucci, I need to get a hold of Joe. This is what I need from 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 this district or I'm having an issue with the zoning issue. There's so many different people having challenges with zoning issues. I am advocating for the people now because the work starts now.
Yep.
Not when I'm in office, it starts now. So I am the type of person to take action on it. So if you have a challenge, if there's something that your city council members, you can't get a hold of them, you're you're needing a point of reference or a resource, reach out to me. Raj at rajforjacks.com. It's R A J for jacks, J A X dot com. Reach out to me there. That's my personal, well, that my personally, but that's my email that where you can reach out to me. Let me know and I will reach back out to you very, very quickly. I will engage with you. I will support you and I will be your advocate.
The, I think you're on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn. So like, they can find you there as well.
Yes, I will give that to you so that way when you post this, you'll have it all. It should be able to be posted.
Yeah.
Directly.
Yeah, I'll put it in the show notes.
Yes.
Before I get into like the Jacksonville questions, is there anybody that you're running with? For, you know, people that are running on for other chairs that you want to give a shout out to and and, you know, point people in the direction to follow their path and their journey?
Absolutely. Blake Bass, he's a very inspiring young, younger candidate. And his story is phenomenal and very impressive. I had someone ask me like, well, I'm not going to say his age, but Blake is younger. Blake, how can you manage this amount of budget? What's the most amount of money you've handled before? And I think he handled that question so well. He said, I've been running a business since I was twelve years old, so I have twice as much experience than most people that know how to manage anything. And he's had some success with 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 businesses all over the city. And I think you should follow Blake. I I truly believe that he is the future of where Jacksonville is going in a positive direction. And his platform is somewhat similar to mine, definitely focusing on stay in jacks. Definitely focus on safety, infrastructure. Zoning challenges and issues, and he is very well aware on contracting challenges and things that are very, very bright for his, for his young age. And a lot of times people are just like, well, he's a little young. Give him an opportunity. This is where it starts, giving that younger person an opportunity because he is so committed. And that is the beauty of being able, he inspires me. I'm just like, man, I don't know, are you getting all this energy? I'm on my fourth cup of coffee, dude. Like, you haven't even drank a cup of coffee yet. And he's up and he's ready and he's passionate. And that inspires me. And that should inspire Jacksonville, that you have somebody so young wanting to make a difference. Because he could be doing the opposite. Look at the the youth incarceration rate right now.
Oh, he could be partying.
Yeah.
Right? A hundred percent.
Yeah.
He could, he could be in a frat.
Yeah.
Yeah, guzzling beer. And he's out here like, I want to fix Jacksonville.
And he's out doing it.
Yeah, it's crazy.
He's out actively doing it and he wants to make it better. He wants to see Jacksonville better and he's so passionate about it. And that inspires me. So I think he is continuing to inspire me and I've only known him for a couple of months.
Yeah.
But I feel like I know him so well, but he's just a solid candidate and he's at large as well, group four. So vote for Blake too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now I'm I'm going to turn the attention to making you say something great about what's currently happening in Jacksonville.
A lot of great things are happening in Jacksonville. It's not just about the negative, right? Today, I'm actually going to go to Friendship Fountain. They have that every, I believe every Fri- every other Friday, I think it is.
Something like that.
Where they have music and vendors out there and stuff like that. I think that's amazing. The family orientation of Jacksonville, just being able to go out there, meet a couple of different families, see the kids together with like friends that we have. I think that Jacksonville has really truly connected me to this togetherness. And if we get more of that, we get more of collaborations from people from all different walks of life. Different ages, different colors, and the collaboration of all of us, we can accomplish so much. So I think Jacksonville is really on the cusp of being able to do that in the right way.
Yeah.
So that that's what I really love about Jacksonville.
What's um, what's your favorite, like, doesn't have to be underrated or unknown, but you know, where do you, whether it's restaurants, this is a good opportunity to shout out people who are doing, doing it right. So like, where are your favorite places in Jax?
I I have so many. San Marco is very, very impressive and it actually has one of my wife and I's favorite restaurant. So Rue Saint Mark is an amazing, fresh, very refreshing restaurant. I love that place. I had the duck con fit. The 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 chicken is just amazing. If you want a really great date night spot for you and your spouse, that is an amazing place. It is a little bit more on the pricey side. So, you know, if you guys want to work on some prices or get like a special going sometimes, that would be nice. But other than that, I think that is probably one of my favorite restaurants in Jacksonville. There's a couple of other restaurants that I would definitely recommend. But I I would say that that's my number one pick. And any of the nightlife. I would say there's a, there's a place right across from Rue Saint Mark. I'm trying to think of the name. It's a very crafty cocktails.
Grape and grain?
Grape and grain. That's it. Thank you.
That place is great.
That place is amazing for a nice little craft cocktail. Drink responsibly. But and please be over twenty-one. But I I think that's a great place to to be able to go and 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 fourscore, right? Anything in that San Marco area, I think I I really truly enjoy. Being in that area. I think it's a great place. It's up and coming. It's been built up very quickly as well, too. So a lot of great restaurants in that area.
Wonderful. You've touched on a couple of these things through like how you're going to platform yourself, but what are, you know, what can Jax do better?
Great question. More community involvement outside of city council. We need to get more community involvement. And when I say that, I'm starting to see a little bit more from Sheriff TK Waters. He's doing an outstanding job to where I've seen him actively going into the community, walking with groups of sheriffs and saying, what can we do for you? So city council needs to do that a lot more. I did see a few city council members, Ron Salem, I did see who was out there. I think it's so important for the the city as a whole to engage with the community outside of city hall. Giving more forums, more platforms, more opportunities, face-to-face interaction, just like this, having a conversation. Where's Donna Deegan? Where is she? I don't know. I I don't know. I went to a, and I'll say this very quickly. I went to an event and it was the Gator, not, it was the Gators versus Georgia event. And she was there, walked in, said her speech and then left. Didn't engage with anybody else really in the room. So I think we need more leadership that's going to be engaging. And I think there's a time, and that time is now. and that time is now for us to really prepare our future on the leadership that we truly need. And I, and it's nothing personal against you, Donna. I just don't think you're doing a great job.
I mean, fair perspective. That's it's a pretty heavy divide.
Yeah.
You know, and I would say anybody running for mayor, Ron included, I mean, unfortunately, she has a name. It's a popular name. You're going to have to overcome it, but
I get it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what 2027 brings. So that's, you know, we're probably a year and three quarters away from that election. And we'll see, you know, let's see what kind of progress Jacksonville makes or what kind of regression we make in the next two years. And it'll probably get paint a really good picture of what we can expect in those elections.
I agree.
Yeah. Well, formally, I want to bring you back.
Yeah.
I think that there's so many questions that people have, like, you know, we have the cranes in the air, we're building things. You know, we want to get more of Jacksonville from certain regions to funnel their way to downtown more. You know, try, how do we entice people from the beaches and stuff to come downtown and turn our downtown into something that's a little bit more thriving. And I just want to talk about those things in the future. And as things evolve, I want to come and talk about what kind of progress you've made. And, you know, if there's anything that you feel better about or feel worse about, but I think along this journey, it'd be really nice to come back, have another conversation and just check in on the journey.
Absolutely. 100%.
Wonderful. Well, I want to thank you for being here. Thanks for taking the time and being a part of this. For anybody confused about which one of us is running for city council, the guy in the polo with the backwards hat is not. The guy with the suit and the red and blue tie is just in case there was any confusion at all. But Raj Gupta, at large, group two, running for council. Thank you for everything you're doing, man. I'm excited to have you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
You're very welcome.
Excellent.